To call to order this committee of the whole meeting, April fifteenth at six thirty P. M. We had no need for an executive session, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Gelsinger for the list.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mumm, roll call.
This is Bauer.
Here.
Mr. Beard.
Here.
Mrs. Brennan. Mr. Galazella. Mr. Gelsinger.
Here.
Mr. Leidy.
Here.
Mr. Plissick.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Weaver.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Thank you, and those two did advise that they would not be able to attend this evening. I don't believe we have any recognition of visitors.
Yes, you have visitors.
Beg your pardon? Any additions, deletions, modifications to the agendas?
No.
Alright, and there, I believe, is no hearing of persons to address the board. So we'll dive straight into the topic of the hour, which is finance and sports services. So if we'll begin with eight A, review of the budgeted district contributions.
Okay, so I want to talk about the fact you have two packets of information in Frogview. We have a packet that has a little bit of information on the Trans Finder software system. The numbers for those pages are at the top right-hand corner, and the other packet is your budget summary updates, which is reflecting where the budget is as of now. That's going to come a little bit later on in the meeting. I just wanted to point those two differences out to you. So the first thing I want to present tonight is in the packet with the Trans Finder software, and this is not in the agenda, but I just want to bring it to the board's attention. When I was preparing the purchase order this week, last week, for the software, I recognized the fact that I had inadvertently used the wrong number. Instead of using nineteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars for the proposal, I used seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. You'll see the two differences on the pages. So I was off by the nineteen twenty-five that I didn't pick up on the right page. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention this evening, in case the board has second thoughts on approving that particular item, expenditure item. I still would have made the same recommendation as I made in the past. I think it's still something that's necessary. I just wanted to report to the board that I had picked up the wrong number and wanted the board to be aware of it, so it wasn't something that was just missed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about that. That was all on me, not on anybody else.
So looking at it, it just looks like we missed a promotion. That was a promotional pricing, and we defaulted out of it, which takes us to the nineteen, or is it still?
No, it was actually the, it was, if you look up on page two of your handout, you can see that there is an item on there for nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, Trans Finder University livestream, routing proficiency course type thing. That's part of the training aspect, and that, that should have been included. That's what I should have included in my number. I didn't include that.
Okay.
So I picked up the two on the bottom of page one, and then pick up that number, and that's where the mistake came in. So I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
So the, the, the total price of converting from bus boss to the new software is?
Is nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars more than what I told you last week.
Okay.
Alright.
Great, thank you.
Alright, okay, move forward with that. Keep going, alright. Alright, um, item A, eight A. At the last meeting, there was a request made to look at the budgeted district contributions. And so if you look on page three of your handout, you're going to say, pay, if, at the bottom, it says page fifty-five. It's a page fifty-five of tab eight in your budget book, and that page is on community service. And you'll see at the bottom right-hand page, side of that page, under eight sixty, there are four organizations that we have made contributions to in the past. The Recreation Commission, which is listed at twenty-four thousand dollars, and you'll see on the agenda I have to be determined, because that's one of the areas we're going to have to discuss tonight. You'll see the library, which was initially budgeted ten thousand dollars and is on the proposed cut list. Ambulance, and that's the ambulance that comes to our football games on Friday nights. We contribute five hundred dollars, and that's kind of like a payment for them to come here, because quite frankly, they don't charge us for it, so that's nice. And the music visitors, the seven hundred and fifty dollars is the amount that we pay them annually to take care of the licensing and the inspection of the music trailer. So I'll be happy to answer questions you have. Those are the only four contributions the district makes. It's not like we make contributions all over the place. It's just those four. And as I said, the library contribution at this point in time is line item out, and you'll see that on your budget summary page that we'll talk about a little bit further down on the agenda. Yes?
I have just another question on that, so you see.
Mm-hmm.
There's seven thousand dollars there for account one eighty. What?
So that's for community swim. That's for our salaries to have a lifeguard. And we have a person that collects money. When they come in, they pay, they pay a couple bucks to do community swim. So that's for the community swim. I think the philosophy of the district has been, since we have this natatorium, which costs probably a couple million dollars when it's put in, and the district residents paid for it, we're going to let the residents use it. So we have a community swim program. I don't know anything about it. I've never been in the pool. I know we have a pool. It's got water. That's about all I know.
So that seven thousand dollars is the labor cost that we pay.
Correct, correct. And we get revenue back on that, too. The revenue comes under the miscellaneous revenue. The question is, does the revenue cover the cost? I'm going to guess not, but it, it does pay for some of it.
Sure. And would it be difficult to find those, to have those numbers?
The revenue numbers? I think the revenue numbers are probably in your budget book. It's probably under the detailed revenue.
Would it be called community service?
Yep.
Okay, revenue twenty twenty-three, two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars? Would that be, it's a page twenty-nine, line item number six nine eight zero, if I'm reading this correctly, which I may not be.
No, it's actually over on page twenty-five.
Oh, sorry.
Refunds and miscellaneous revenue. Yeah, no, under tab two.
Two.
Yeah. So if you look at the very first line item, it says community swim. That's the revenues that we received, three years of actual, current year's estimate, and next year's estimate. So yeah, as I said, I guessed it wouldn't cover the cost. It doesn't cover the cost. That's the revenue. I don't think we charge that much. We probably only charge them a buck or two to swim. So again, it's a resource that's out there. We wanted to make it available to the community, kind of like the track. We let people walk on the track, because it's a very expensive item.
So part of that seven thousand is for lifeguards? Are we, are we required to provide a nurse for that as well?
No, just lifeguard. We want to make sure no one drowns, so we have a lifeguard, and we have.
Probably two, the way they can switch off.
Again, I don't know, because I've not been down there during community swim. I don't know that they have two. They may, but I know we have a lifeguard. We probably pay him twenty, twenty-five bucks an hour, something like that. We have a lifeguard fee.
We have the manager, too. I think the manager served.
Is there a manager there, too? So it's, we do have essentially two lifeguards there.
There are at least two there. I have personal experience. My daughter being one of those lifeguard, she's always with somebody else.
And then we have a ticket taker.
Just one hour a day, most of the summer.
I want to say it's Wednesday.
It's Monday night.
Monday night.
Monday night, maybe Wednesday night, too. She only works Mondays, but.
Okay, so.
Seven thousand.
Kind of the bottom line there is, it costs us about sixty-five hundred a year to have a community swim program.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think that's accurate statement. Actually, more than that, because it's, you have to do the benefits that also come into play, the retirement, social security, which is the second, right below the salary amounts there.
So maybe closer to ninety-five hundred.
That's probably accurate.
Do you know how many people take advantage of that?
Well, you can sort of estimate if they charge two dollars a pop, and we're only getting five or six hundred dollars in. I'm sure that probably, again, I don't have that data. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that data. You know, you don't know it either. We don't, we don't have that data.
So it, it sounds like it's a program that's serving this small number of people.
Oh, I agree with that. It's a program, again, I think the philosophy was that if we are spending taxpayer resources to purchase and build this natatorium, that the community should be allowed to use it. If you don't want the community to use it, that's fine. We can certainly stop the program.
We know if there's an increase of chemicals or anything like that, that has to go into the maintenance.
I don't think so. I think we'd have to treat the pool regardless. Yeah. Summer, I don't think it could, I don't think it could use in the summer. Oh, do they?
Yeah, they, they swim, they practice, and it meets.
That would be under a different, I mean, they'd be a, like an organization that has to use the resources, and they're like the category.
Yeah, they would, they would definitely have to apply to use it. I'm not sure what the fee would be, but they're an outside agency.
But that would, I mean, that would be kind of separate from the community's one.
Right, yes.
That's separate from community.
So the lifeguards are just like hourly children, young people?
Yes, trained. And then a pool manager who's there to oversee it.
So they're there the, the entire time of any of the community swims as well?
Mm-hmm. I think we have two of them, but they rotate. They're not both there at the same time, I think, so they're not out. They can have some time off if they need it for backup.
Well, it makes sense, because if somebody's got to be safe, someone's going to be a watch source.
Is there any kind of like check-in process in the event there were an incident? Do they know who's in and out?
You have to sign in. My daughter had to be signed in, and we won't be paid. But I don't think I did. I think it was only the minors.
Again, I've never been there, so I don't know.
I've not been in the pool either, so I can't attest to it.
So that, the main question in asking that, or answer, I guess, is if you're looking to, to have numbers, if, if the monetary value isn't a good representation of the total bodies, then if there's some sort of check-in process, that might help lead you more towards the answer you were seeking?
Yeah, I think, you know, this just kind of showed up. It wasn't something I had previously identified, but I think the, the bloody monkey that's on the table is, how much is this program costing the district, and how many people are actually using it? I mean, if I'm the person who wants to swim here, and I'm paying two dollars to get a swim lap for an hour or two, it's a great deal for me. But, you know, the district in whole is paying ninety-five hundred dollars a year approximately to have a program. So I don't know, maybe we should look at how many people are actually using it, what are the fees to use it, and do we think the fee structure is correct for the service that's being provided?
Or alternatively, how is this advertised? I didn't know this existed either on the, just the calendar? Because that could be an alternate solution.
That maybe participation's really low, because few people know about it.
Social media director.
So if we were to get more people there, would we need more lifeguards?
No.
Okay. So if we advertise, we get more people in, maybe it only costs us six thousand instead of nine thousand?
I, I think if you're looking. My gut tells me if you're looking at it from a strictly cost standpoint, it'll probably never be cost-effective. So if that's the case, then your options are pretty straightforward. You eliminate the program. If the issue isn't the cost effectiveness so much as it is providing that service to the community, then you're going to be running a negative program, a lost program. It's going to cost you money. So, you know, certainly that up to the, to the board, whatever you guys want to do, that's certainly in your prerogative.
Just a, a point of caution on that, you also allow your facilities to be used at no revenue generation for many community groups. So I would see, in my opinion, you know, take it for what it's worth, this would be the same, because there is a lost revenue. If you look at it from that regard, when you're allowing the facilities to be used inside and out, and we don't charge people for it. So.
I feel like you read my mind. I was actually thinking that exact same thing.
Correct, like with basketball, they've, you know, if we have custodians or cleanup, or lights are on in the weekend, you know, and even if they do pay, it certainly wouldn't cover the cost. And I'm not suggesting we cut that either. I think that's an excellent use of facilities. I'm saying it's, they're, they're very similar in the, in how they're used.
I would be interested in knowing just what is the cost structure? Is it, you know, a dollar or two dollars? Is it kids free, and adults are six dollars, or?
I'd be curious to know that as well.
We can get that information for you.
I, I, obviously, I guess the, the, the cost numbers divided by the, you know, the revenue kind of tell us about how many, how many people, and we don't know if that's a large number of people using it once or twice each, or a small group of people who consistently use it.
Right, I, yeah.
Interesting thought people don't think of, but to have in your notes, if anybody ever does ask, it's, I guess it's valuable info. So, yeah.
And I asked the question because there's lots and lots of great, wonderful things, that lots of programs we could have, more things we could buy, you know, better facilities, better everything, but ultimately, you know, we, we have to find some balance between what are we spending on discretionary items, and what proportion of the student population is using it or benefiting it?
Well, we can certainly get that information for you. In fact, I haven't done my board report for the month yet, so I can include that information in my board report. For this month. Board report. So don't forget it. Alright. Any other questions on community services, that page, and the services that, there's organizations that we have donated to in the past? Because the next item on the agenda is going to be the summer rec program, which is the biggest item on that page. And so if you're ready to go to that discussion.
Yes, please.
That's the next page. It's page four in that handout. So based on our conversation at the last meeting, I wanted to give several options and several cost structures to sort of give the board some ideas as far as where they want to go. And so I have four different scenarios. Scenario one at the top is that the district would budget for the same amount we've budgeted in the past, twelve thousand dollars, the summer rec program, and then we would charge parents a per-student fee based on the number of anticipated students that are registering, which we're estimating at two hundred students. We did a three-year analysis. I think the actual three-year average was two eighteen, the actual average for the participations was one oh five. So two hundred is in the ballpark, and one hundred's in the ballpark for the second scenario, which is the same as the first scenario, except using it on the anticipated actual participants of a hundred students as opposed to the ones who just sign off. And you can see the per-fee per student, going anywhere from sixty dollars per student, if the district only funds twelve thousand dollars, and parent cost contribution has to make up the difference, all the way down to, I did it by two thousand dollar increments, down to if the district would kick in twenty-two thousand dollars as opposed to the twenty-four thousand, and the parents had to pay two thousand dollars. I did the same thing below with scenario number two. And then I had scenario three and scenario four, which is if the district says, you know what, we're just not going to fund the program anymore, and if, but they still want the program. So if you look at, I look at it as four different options. One is, we're eliminating the program altogether or done. We're not offering it. It's just not going to happen. Second option is, we're going to allow the program to operate, but we're not going to put any money towards the program, which in case has to be funded by the parents. The third option would be, we're going to keep the funding at a certain level, but the parents have to pick up some of that cost. And the fourth option would be, we're going to fund the whole program. So you have those four scenarios, and what I've done here is just listed out a couple of different options, and tried to make it easier for the board to come up with an idea of what direction they wish us to go in with regard to this program.
So my thoughts after going through this multiple times is that I think that we should invest a little bit more money than we have in the past to keep the program running. I think in, in the interest of investigation, we should charge a small fee to see how the program runs with a small fee. That way we can gauge that in futures, to see if we want to keep it up, or if, or if it's something that people will pay to do. I don't know what a small fee is, between twenty and fifty dollars, I would say, per registry, because we've, we've guessed at whether or not, you know, if we charge fifty dollars, will there be two hundred people to sign up, or will it drop to fifty, or, you know? So as an experiment, I say we fund it this year, pay, charge maybe, I don't know, like I said, thirty dollars, and then see how it goes, and see if we have people drop off, and then we can kind of figure out going forward whether it's something we want to continue to fund, or whether they can, it can fund itself and still continue. Just an idea.
Do we today, right now, have an e-commerce option to be able to register and pay upfront?
Yeah, we have a RevTrack. We use a program called RevTrack, so parents can pay online and register online. They do that for some other activities we have in the school already. So, yeah, we have that option. And we would put that in the communication out to the parents. I'm sure that Lori would put that in the communication. You know, if that's the direction you want to go in, just thinking out loud here for a second, you can certainly determine whatever number that is, that you guys want to charge, and then obviously, whatever that generation revenue just offsets whatever that cost is. So if you budget the twenty-four thousand dollars, let's say you generate ten thousand dollars in revenues, well, now you're down to fourteen thousand. That's actually coming out of the district, and even though you're budgeted the twenty-four, that would just drop to the bottom line, obviously. So that's one way to think about it. I hadn't really considered that up to this point, if you go down that road. Again, you could pick up.
That's pretty much where my mind has been. If, if there is a subset of the community that does find value in this, and they consistently use this, and, and it is considered a loss seemingly, but majority of people who've come and spoken about it or reached out regarding it, it, it only seems to make sense that i- if, if the majority of the issue revolves around the increased cost that we try to supplement and find a way to make ends meet on that additional unknown.
Right. Well, and the other thing it does is it would give you more data regarding the interest level of parents to participate with regard to a fee structure, which hasn't been out there at this point in time.
Not only that, but if you're paying to participate, you're more likely to show up.
Correct.
Which adds value to it.
I would, I would definitely. Think you'd have.
And you're not going to get people signing up that don't show up if they're paying for it. So we're having two hundred, about two hundred kids sign up, only a hundred show up. So that isn't, that throws our data off right now. So if we're charging at signup, this is what it costs to be involved, then we'll get a better idea who's dedicated to be in there. So.
Could I ask a clarifying question on that? The two hundred and the one hundred. Are you saying that half the people that sign up never show up?
That's per day.
Where, on any given day, about half the population is there, you know, some kids, maybe this is on Tuesday, or some this is on a Thursday.
Yeah, or goes on vacation.
Yeah.
Because I know like.
People that are actually participating, it's just that on any given day, only half of them show up.
Well, that we don't know. That's exactly what I just said.
Yeah, I don't know if we, do they keep track of all the kids that are?
Yes. So, for instance, when my kids signed up, every day you'd go in, and there'd be an Excel spreadsheet of your kiddo's information, and they would check, just like the teachers do for attendance here. And then for, for us, for instance, we were away an entire week. So my kids missed one of the weeks, and then when we came back, we just started checking those boxes again. And then you do, you absolutely have those children that are there every single solitary day. And then you have the kids who are like, I don't want to go today. And the mom's like, okay, and then they go tomorrow.
Monday, Monday's a good day for me to go.
So I think it, I truly think it's kind of a hybrid of all of that.
Right.
You have summer vacation, you have, still have illness, obviously. You have the kids who will be there like clockwork, and then you have the kids who maybe just don't feel like it one day.
How many weeks long is this?
It is five weeks long. It is a total of twenty-seven days. We did not go to the Fourth of July, so it's twenty-eight days, twenty-four, I'm sorry, four times.
They don't go five a day, do they?
No, they don't go five. It's four days a week.
And when you register in the past, four times.
It's, it's, it's like seven weeks. It's like seven weeks. It's, it's got to be more than like seven weeks.
But when they register in the past, do they register for one week at a time?
Nope.
No, no, you register the whole summer.
So there's two hundred different kids that registered in the past?
And it's, it is not include incoming kindergartners, and it does not, does not include outgoing, no, it includes outgoing fifth graders, but not incoming kindergartners. Because you have to have had a calendar year in our buildings.
So we, i- is it five weeks, or did you say it might be seven?
No, it's, it starts, this year's program would start June tenth and run until the last week in July, July twenty-fifth or something. So I think it's seven or eight.
Yeah, that would be about.
Take four times.
So you're saying it's like thirty-five days?
No, thirty, twenty-seven days that they get paid.
Twenty-seven days that they're there.
We're operating at four days a week with one day.
So if we were charging fifty dollars to sign up, that's less than two dollars a day, if, if the child shows up for every available day.
Yes, it's June tenth through July twenty-fifth, which would be seven weeks.
I personally think there should be a charge for each week. You sign up for, I mean, if you're going to charge for the entire summer, you're talking seven weeks of how many hours per day? Because then that, that gives the parents the ability to say, I'm not going to be here for one week. We're going on vacation, so I don't need to pay for that week. I mean, any other organization out there that does summer camps, run them one week at a time?
So you're suggesting there would be a rolling registration process?
That's the way anybody else does it. Look at any other community college that does summer camps, or anywhere else that does summer.
But they have different people coming every week.
That's going to be difficult to staff.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be difficult to track that and to take that, this payment. That's, that's going to, that's going to be a lot. You, you're going to have a lot of cost just taking payments if you're doing it on a weekly basis. And I think we would make less out of it. You know, I mean, what are you going to do, ten dollars a week to make that more reasonable? Oh, no, I'd rather just do fifty for the summer, and then they could balance it out. You know, I mean, if they say I'm off this week, well, then, you know, you paid two dollars a, a visit over here instead of a dollar seventy-five.
Plus, it could be like credit card fees, two processing fees, right? So that would increase significantly if you're having multiple smaller transactions.
Yeah.
Kirby, I just want to correct one thing that I said. I was referencing signup at Mannheim. I do know that last year Park Hills wasn't a site, so those kids were allowed to go to any of the schools. So I'm not sure how they did attendance in that situation, because it is possible you might have had that child going to West Mannheim to play with a friend one day, and Bearsville to play with a friend another day. I do know at Mannheim, we had that Excel spreadsheet, but we were always in our building all summer. So it might, it may not be done that way.
Could they add a name in on the Excel sheet?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You can sign in it, yeah.
It just wouldn't cross-reference to the other school lists.
And I feel like we advertised it as you could go to different schools, because if you think about it, we're only doing two schools in the morning and two schools in the afternoon. So if, if the Weaver family wasn't available nine to eleven, but my kids were available one to three, I'd be like, okay, I'll drive them over to West Mannheim, and they can play there with their friends at West Mannheim. So for tracking purposes, that would probably still complicate things, just for tracking purposes.
So how many people are at each site? What if a hundred kids showed up at West Mannheim on Thursday, unexpectedly?
I think in all the, yeah, in all the years I've done this, which I think is eight now, I want to say we hit like seventy-five kids one year, and that was when it was all day. I want to say that was the first year I sat on it, and that was at West Mannheim.
All day?
It went from nine to three. It went from nine to three.
I can believe that. It's free babysitting at that point.
You could come and go freely, yes. No, with your parents checking you around. Right.
I think for, for round number example, if you were to do fifty dollars for the program, and that would also help with data collection to see who is available, and, I mean, if, if somebody calls or emails and says, hey, I, I can't even spare five dollars because I'm that tight, we'll find somebody to pay for it. I mean, honestly, there's plenty of people that'll, that'll help families out and pay for that. But still, to, to do the data collection, yeah, I think fifty dollars is more than reasonable.
From, it's, it's less than a dollar an hour for them to be there.
I mean, I do think that fifty dollars is going to look like a, a large cost to, to some, to some families, but I think if they want their kid in, it's throughout the seven weeks that it goes on, it'll be a huge benefit at less than two dollars an hour. But we also have to remember, it's not a babysitting service. So, you know, they're only there for two dollars, for two hours or so. So, you know, this is a, an activity for them to take, take part in, and, you know, you will have to pay for it.
And with that. And with that round number, hundred kids, that's five thousand dollars offset in the program. Two hundred is ten thousand. So, I mean, I I th- I think it's a decent compromise. But like I said, we have to find people to, to to pay for a couple of people to say, hey, I can't spare five bucks. But I I'll I'll personally do that. So, you know.
So the, I have one logistical question. So say, say we do the fee to pay and you don't, you don't hit a certain number at one school. So let's use Mannheim because our, we're always the lowest enrollment. So say the Mannheim parents are like, well, there's five of us that are willing to pay. Economically, are we staffing Mannheim for two hours for five kids? Or are we saying to those parents, because my point of view is if we announce we're doing this, then it's understood we're doing it. And if variables change after the parents have already signed up, are are we as a district eating those variable changes? Because we made the decision or are we saying, hey, all the Mannheim parents, you already can't walk, so drive your kids to West Mannheim? Because you may, I mean, we may particularly lose those kids and it may not be West Mannheim. Who knows? It might be one of the other schools or may not be Mannheim that that happens. But, you know, if the dominoes fall wrong and we don't have enough enrollment, what's that magic number? Are we, are we doing two kids at one school because that's what signed up there?
I would say no, personally. It's either cancel it there or ask them if they want to relocate.
Right.
That would be the choice. So if it's not beneficial cost-wise.
Right.
You either move them, you give them the option to move, or you cancel it. I mean, that would be my personal opinion.
I would say I would leave that up to the program. From a school board perspective, we're looking at a a dollar amount at a program. Uh whoever's running the program, Lori Billman can make that decision. I trust her to make that decision. Uh and I think that she wants this program to continue, so funding it properly and making it efficient is in her best interests.
Correct.
Um as for what I think part of your question was, is if we have to eat some. I'm saying I think it's worth eating whatever it takes for one more year to establish some information so that we can, we can move forward uh in a better, well, more informed way.
Yeah, I mean, fifty bucks for the entire summer, that's not asking a lot for the parents to pay.
One question that's, um in all my years of experience, it's going to come up. Are you capping a family's expense?
Well, that was good. That was actually my next statement. I mean, I get asked that all the time. Do we do family discounts?
Well, like, so example, if you have four kids, is it two hundred bucks or do you say no family pays more than?
I personally, that's fifty dollars per kid.
That's, I do, I don't, I'm just saying you're gonna get asked that question.
Bucks for the entire summer, you know. Yeah, I get asked that all the time. You know, do you do family discounts?
Another decision that would have to be made in the context of this program.
So.
And my answer very often is the prices are very reasonable as it is.
So point of information, which I think might ultimately answer part of these questions. So the objective tonight, going back to all the way at the end of the agenda, is ultimately tentative budget adoption April twenty-fourth. So if we're seeking to finalize, this is part of that tentative adoption. So we would have to all approve April twenty-fourth. And then what, how fast can it be set up in, I'm sorry, Rev something?
RevTrack.
RevTrack. Uh logistically, and I would think by that point, it would have to be as simple and straightforward as possible. And then communicated out, it, does that even leave enough time at that point?
I think, I. I think they're two separate issues. I think because you're saying we're gonna fund it at twenty-four thousand dollars. And then you're coming back to us later, separate from the budget, saying, set that up with a fee. And any fee you get back, you know, go back into the general fund. So I I don't think that your budget approval is contingent on the cost of the program. Cause you're, at worst case scenario, you're saying we're gonna fund it at twenty-four thousand dollars. You give us a directive to set it up with a fee. That fee is then you earmark it back into the general fund and you're fine.
Yep, I would say we would just have to accept the twenty-four at this point.
And it's just a matter of establishing the fee.
And you could do that, you could tell us that's separate from the twenty-fourth or?
You you could do it separate, but it is important to get that information early so they can start to advertise and see what the interest level is, so.
Getting it set up on RevTrack takes three days. It's easy, it's quick. So that's, I'm not concerned about that part of it.
It's certainly not gonna help us hit our budget number, but I think we have to look elsewhere at this point.
Right. I was just looking at from the perspective of a weekly or per child or per family or any of those things. Does that add to the amount of time that it potentially would take to get payment incoming?
We already have, with with the way we have the computer protection plan set up, this is very similar to that, so we can model it after that. So it won't take much time at all to set it up. It really won't.
Thank you.
And what it will do is it'll give you good data, or better data than you have now regarding the ELS to see the program with regards to fee structures. So I think that makes some steps moving forward.
The one question I would have is, is this the board's desire that everyone pays with the credit card or are we still going to accept checks and cash? I mean, that, because we, because we can accept any. I mean, that, we can, we can do any. There, but I will tell you, like, the middle school, they they push RevTrack payments, like, for their yearbooks and for their, some of their trips and things. Because that way they don't have to handle the checks and cash in the office. So, just a question. I'm perfectly fine with us accepting all three methods of payment.
Are we talking, when we're talking about payment fees, are we talking the context of one fee for the entire program? Not a weekly, because if we were to do something like a daily or a weekly fee, then there's also the problem associated with. When Johnny shows up on Monday, how do we know whether Johnny paid for that week?
The way I look at it is very similar to most of the other programs. I mean, if you think about sports and those sort of, it's a registration fee.
As a fee for the whole session, period, the whole program.
And then the only other question I have is, do we have a minimum amount of children to run the program? Because if your goal, if we're saying we're budgeting twenty-four thousand dollars and the goal with the fee is to recoup and you, we see the lo- let's say we see the lowest number of registrations we've ever seen. In the whole, and well, even, even let's say fifty, even in the whole district, that's twenty-five hundred dollars of that twenty-four thousand.
Then we paid two thousand dollars and we cancel it next year.
I mean, I think that's just something we need to be cognizant of.
We're committing to this and if it's a loss, then it's a loss and we know what to do from here on out.
Doesn't it also reduce the number of people?
We would reduce the staff. We we do that. Yep, that's exactly what we do. So we'll, the cost won't be as great, we'll reduce cost, but I understand the point.
So you do all, you would do all that and then potentially look at cancel next year if we don't have the participation at fifty bucks per child for the summer?
If, for example, you see fifty kids at fifty dollars and you know that in order to get to a cost that you're more comfortable with would be a hundred dollars. Well, then it's not gonna work. It's not, so it makes a pretty easy decision.
Right, if it drops to fifty, it's not gonna get any better at a.
So in order for Lori to move forward, we'd still need her to wait until April twenty-fourth for the tentative adoption? Or, I mean, cause she's got to find staff.
Could we vote tonight on whether we want to continue the program or not? And if there is a, a fee, maybe an approximate fee or a maximum budget amount?
So you have an agenda item, so I don't think, oh, that's right.
I mean, you're, you're looking at seven numbers here that, you know, we can take the roundtable vote of, you know, who's going to support it.
I forgot about that. I forgot about that.
Yes, I think one of the things that we can do, if the board would be comfortable, it's not, it's not a shell game. It's how we, we know if someone who may be leaving the district or our position is potentially coming up, we know staffing can be a concern from a timeline standpoint. Typically, what we've done is the board has authorized the administration to anticipate, advertise it as anticipated. By the time Mrs. Billman would be able to advertise and interview, the tentative adoption should be on the twenty-fourth's agenda. Assuming it would pass, then she's more than within her scope to do it. So if the board's okay with it, uh you know, just by not have had not a formal vote by any stretch, if you're comfortable with us doing it as an anticipated vacancy. That's a way we can go ahead and at least start to advertise and gather applicants.
And I'd say probably the same with the fee. You can actually put an agenda item on the twenty-fourth to establish a fee. But if you have an idea of what you want that to be right now, then she'd be able to put that potentially out there. Cause she's gonna be looking to solicit from parents, see what the interest level was.
And again, ant- anticipated dates, fee and employment.
So you want to go around, starting with, uh, you want to say whether or not you're okay with the program and give a fee that you're?
There's lots of questions. I'm gonna know. I would cancel the program.
I'm okay with the twenty-four thousand and I'm also okay with fifty dollars each. That's where my brain is.
I'm okay with the fifty bucks, just to give it one more year to potentially come out of the hole. You know, but I do think that there is a benefit to the program. I just, I said at the last board meeting that the unknowns is what scares me. But if we're at least going in a direction to be fiscally responsible for the future for our taxpayers.
I was going to say pretty much exactly what Keith just said. I I, if i- if this is going to continue because it is seen as wholly beneficial for a lot of parents then fifty dollars this year for registration per child makes sense to at least have a better dataset going into decision-making after this year.
Yep, I uh I think fifty dollars is a a perfectly reasonable amount to gain the information that we need. Uh and uh recoup some costs and be easy and beneficial for the parents out there. And uh, you know, as far as paying for it this year, I'm willing to take whatever it is.
I think charging will be the end of the program. I understand why we're doing it. Um I think it'll be the end of the program. But if we can give it one more year and see if we can make it work, then I say let's dedicate the money to it and see if it offsets the cost. I think it's just a kind way to let the program go is what we're gonna find. But I think offering it to our community is really important, so if this is the way that it needs to happen, then so be it.
Yeah, I'm okay with the twenty-four and I'd like to see the pr- program continue. I don't think it's ever gonna pay for itself or anything like that. I I think it's a good community service. I think it's a good outreach. I think it gets people at our playgrounds, you know, it's a community. It's, it's a lot of things beyond that. I mean, I know you mentioned it's like babysitting service. I don't really consider it that. I mean, I grew up here. They had this kind of program in town in Hanover. And it did wonders. I mean, it gets people of all different ages out. It gets all kinds of kids. There's someone there to kind of oversee stuff, make sure things don't get abused, don't think happen. I I just don't see it that way, you know, and and I feel the same way about the pool. It offers job opportunities for the kids here at school. Uh you know, it gives people that maybe don't have a chance to use a pool to come use the pool. Uh again, does it cost the money? Yes. The the entire thing costs money. So I I think we gotta offer some of these opportunities. I mean, we spend a lot of money, a lot of money on stuff. This is like a good thing. I don't want to take away a good thing. I want it to, you know, grow. That that was, that's the way I feel.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I was, uh, that was moving on. Um I I would tend to agree uh with Mr. Plasic. I do think that this is a, not to suggest, but there are some kids in our community that their parents are working and, you know, they're trying to make their ends meet and I understand the fee. But the idea that we can get kids to socialize and come in and use our facilities, that's, that's enticing to me. I I think that maybe if there is a fee, I understand the boards, but I would hate to see it go slowly into the good night. I just think it is a really beneficial program. We know, we know through research, we know the importance of play. And I think this is a time of the year when kids, their best friend lives across town, they can't ride a bike, but they get to see him at this. And even if it is two hours a day, and you know, the other thing is teacher pipeline, people, kids working at these camps could eventually become our teachers. So that would be my thought. But I I understand the fiscal aspect of it and to me, that's important. But forgive me, but the overshadowing of the benefits of the kids are where I tended to go, so.
I was just gonna add, uh, last of fees perspective wise, I do think that having um former graduates, potential teachers coming back, giving them an employment opportunity in the summertime. I know that my own son worked there a few years ago as somebody wanted to potentially be a teacher. I feel like we attract a nice clientele of folks when we can give them opportunities like this. And if it's, and I realize why we're, you know, you're, you're being fiscally conservative as far as like thinking about this as an investment. It does give you that benefit as well. Just gives kids employment opportunities that may want to enter into the field and working with kids. Especially if they don't know whether they want to do it. Kids are hard sometimes, so taking an opportunity to see that.
I think this is also a good opportunity for, after this discussion, everybody can think on it for a week or two, you know, and kind of stew on that a little bit, so.
We'll say too, one, one part of it is I have the benefit of living in a, a very close community and my kids, I had six different kids in my yard right before I came here. Uh but schools like in Mannheim, when things are stretched out, uh and it's really hard for them to get together. I recognize that sometimes that's the only way you can get a group of kids together, play a game of kickball or or whatever it is, so. Yeah, I I mean, I I definitely see the benefits of the program. Just, uh, yeah, I don't know. I I kicking an extra ten thousand dollars out for, to, I guess, the change in the budget is the hardest thing. We've been perfectly willing to fund it for years and years and stuff. Additional ten thousand, I guess, is the biggest concern. So if we can make that up, I'm happy.
Moving on to technology bids?
So yes, included in that packet on pages five, six and seven, you'll see a summary of the technology bids. If you recall, we asked the board about a month ago if we could go out the bid for next year's technology equipment. We normally do that here in the spring. Uh so that the equipment can arrive and they have the summer then to um image the machines. I can't remember if it's image or goes, image the machines. Um the good news is you can see that the uh bids came in a little bit better than anticipated, so that's always good news. Uh in fact, it came in some sixty-eight thousand dollars uh below uh what was uh currently uh anticipated. And you can see the details there. Uh Doug has highlighted the ones that he's recommending. Um all in all, I think he was very pleased with how the bids came in. Uh and if there's no objections, we would put this on the agenda for the twenty-fourth for order approval so that we could get the purchase orders cut and get the equipment uh ordered.
I think you had me. It came in lower than expected.
So don't get used to that. It doesn't always happen that way. As you saw with the bus bids, not trying to be Debbie Downer here, but that's just reality. I mean, sometimes they're higher, sometimes they're lower.
I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but some of these seem significantly lower. We've verified that these are real.
We got samples, so we we require samples if it's something that we're not expecting.
Yeah, China knockoff or?
To the best of our knowledge, we're not, we're not knocking off China tonight. Um no, uh we we do scrutinize it pretty good. We do require samples for some of the stuff, like the bags, we get samples. We actually do a, Doug does a test with the bags and try to see if he can destroy them like the kids would. So.
I'd like to take part in that sometime.
We we can probably make that happen. Well, Doug's sort of like a really big kindergartner, really tall one. But, but no, I I I think they came in uh well and I, again, I think he's pleased with the results. So we will, um, if there's no further objections, we'll put that on the agenda for approval on the twenty-fourth. All right. Yep, sure. Yep.
That's part of, that's considered part of next school year.
Correct, that's in his budget for next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he already got, he already got his computers this year. You don't let him get them twice.
That I missed something that recommend to award the bids, five hundred seventy-eight thousand. But the total adds up to five seventy-five.
Oh. So, yeah, I didn't catch that, sorry. He took last year's and copied it. I got him to change the dates. I caught the dates were wrong, but I didn't catch the amount. So uh the five seventy-five, four forty-six is accurate. The five seventy-eight was probably last year's number.
Okay, all right.
And I'll verify that. Right. We anticipated an increase, but the cost pretty much stayed the same. In fact, it came in a little bit better than what we anticipated on some of the items, so that was good. I'll, I'll also verify that information I just gave you to make sure that's correct, but I I would have to imagine that that has to add up. And thank you for bringing that up to my attention. What's that? What's that? Yeah, yep. Well, we spent a lot of money on IT equipment during COVID, I know that. All right, next item is review of the current budget status. I'll turn that over to Doug, and that's page eight.
Yeah, page eight in your packet. What I, I did, just real quick, I, I went over where we are at the end of March.
Let me set it up. I did ask Doug. So part of the process, we get to this point in time in the budget, I did reach to Doug and said, Doug, would you do me a favor? Would you look at where we're at currently? Because he does a lot of the nuts and bolts with regards to expenditures and oversees them much closer than I do. I said, could you do a quick analysis for us to see where we think we're gonna end up this year? And I'll let him explain.
Yeah, so what I did is I just went through and looked at, based on the object basis, basis, which is the, you know, a hundred for salaries, two hundred for benefits, and so on and so forth down there on the left-hand side. What I did is I just looked at what our actuals were as of the end of March, compared that to what our budget is. And then you'll see the far right column, it's just a percent of our budget used. So you figure end of March, it should be about seventy-five percent of the way through the year. So those numbers should roughly be around seventy-five percent. And you'll see they're, they're, they range, you know, especially if you look at the salary piece of it at the top, you know, we're, we're, except for the, the administration piece, everyone else is under seventy-five percent. And you go down there on the right-hand side, you know, there are a couple that are a little bit above the seventy-five. You know, you see workers' compensations at ninety or a hundred and four percent. So that's what I was just looking at, to, to see where we are in relation to a percentage of our budget. And then I looked at the overall, at the bottom, the total expenditures were at sixty-eight point seven eight percent of our budget. So I, I think we're in good shape. You know, the one question Jeff and I were looking at is we're gonna overspend our budget. We did that last year. As looking at these numbers, we don't think we will. But again, we still have three months of the school year to go. A lot of the supplies, all that type of stuff, the buildings are already purchased. They're not gonna purchase any of those type, you know, large supply quantities here in April, May, and June. Equipment, that's, that's been purchased. That gets purchased at the beginning of the year. So this is just a quick way to take a look at it, see where we're at. You know, we were curious to see what that bottom line number was. Were we close to seventy-five or were we, you know, far over that? Or do we have to worry about overspending? At this point, I, I think we'll be in good shape. And if there's any questions on any of those, I, I can answer them for you.
I really appreciate you doing this. This is very helpful, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
So we build our twenty twenty-four budget, or twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five off of this, obviously. And the, the goal here is to get our twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five in line. So have we looked at where we've seen a little bit under? And then adjusted next year's to try and alleviate some of that overage? Or is that where we're going next?
It's not quite that simple.
Yeah.
You're looking at two different fiscal years, you're looking at two different budgets, you're looking at two different initiatives of different things. So I would say what normally happens, and I'll say normally, and I'll let Doug answer his answer because it might be a little different than mine. I would say normally these things lag a year. You usually see the, the actuals occur when you do the analysis at the end of the year, and then you make the adjustment, when the adjustment comes for the next year. Because we already have this year, when I say this year, I'm already thinking twenty-four, twenty-five budgets in the can. That's done. To go back and make changes to all those accounts, to all those things right now, probably isn't realistic. But we can make those changes and adjustments for the next year. So for example, workers, is it workers' comp?
Yeah, workers' comp.
Workers' comp. We do that on a percentage basis of salaries. Well, it appears to me that we need to increase the percentage that we're budgeting for. Instead of budgeting like point zero eight percent or whatever that number is, we need to increase it to one point zero percent. So we'll do that next year when we do the budget. We could go back and make the adjustments, it just seems to be an exercise that's challenging, that's all. And I'll let you respond then if you want to.
I mean, we haven't finalized the budget yet, we've gotta hit a number, right? Isn't that what we're, for next year, I mean?
We have not finalized the budget. We will not finalize the budget till you have the final adoption of the budget, which will occur at the earliest June twelfth.
Right, but we gotta, we wanna get it more in line because we're over right now, right?
So yes, the expenditures exceed the revenues, we'll get to that page.
Well, all I'm saying is when we look at twenty twenty-three into twenty-four, and we see that, just as an example, extracurricular, we've only spent forty-six percent. Now, maybe we'll spend more of that in the summer.
You will.
Well, you will.
Because of the nature of it. But for this example, I'm saying we've only done forty-six percent. So looking at next year's budget, we can say maybe we estimated too high on that. So in order to get it in line, I mean, I, as far as I know, we're up in the air with how we're gonna get it down right now.
So what you have to understand when we do budgeting is if we know a number, a good number, that's what we use. Salaries, we know, we have contracts.
Which is why we have to look at all these.
So seventy-five percent is salaries. The benefits, pretty much no. We don't determine the retirement rate, that's determined by the state. We know what our health insurance rate's gonna be. So those are the two biggies with regards to that. The other stuff are actual expenditures that are budgeted through the allocation system, through the various buildings or programs. And could they come in higher or lower? Absolutely. Could they have different emphasises from year to year? Absolutely. You know, that, that's information that we don't really anticipate or don't, you know, we get that information we have. I don't know that we make adjustments other than what we have.
That's what I'm saying, the most updated information that you have on whether or not, because when you built that budget, you were going off of the budget for this current year. So the most updated information we have is right here.
We don't budget based on the current year's budget, we budget based on the actual numbers. We don't, when we're, when we're building a budget, we're getting the numbers. We're not looking at last year's and inflating it by five percent. That's not how that works. It's, it's what the numbers are. Now, there are some that we look at and we say, okay, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Is it gonna be a hundred and five next year, is it gonna be ninety-five? I flip a coin.
Well, so then what I'm saying is we're basing it off the reduction here. You're saying you've already done that.
I'm saying when we build a budget, we get the best numbers we have available at that time. Are those numbers gonna be higher or lower? We won't know that until the end of next year. I mean, your guess is good as mine. My crystal ball's a little murky when it comes to that kind of stuff. But like I said, I think we put the numbers in we know of. I would say salaries, we have them pretty much spot on. And that's nine, that's, I mean, the only thing you don't know is if someone's gonna retire between now and the time we did the budgeting. If we knew those, we already did account for those. If someone quits, if someone leaves, we don't have that anticipated, obviously. But I, you know, when you're looking at salaries and benefits being seventy percent of the budget, I'd say the seventy percent of the budget's pretty tight. The fact we use allocation systems for all of our buildings and programs, that's pretty tight. They can't exceed those allocations. And Doug monitors that like a hawk. So, you know, I don't know that there's anything that we'd be making adjustments for. We already know we're not gonna have any additional debt service costs next year because we're not doing a bond issue till later than this year. And we've already, we've already made a determination, whatever happens, we are not gonna have a debt service payment increase next year. We can control that. So those are the biggies I can think of.
Yeah. Well, when you look at salaries there, if you look at like maintenance, we're at fifty-five percent. You have two positions that aren't filled. We're still gonna budget for those positions because they could be filled, and we could have a full staff next year for the whole year. So we can't look at that fifty-five percent and say, oh, well, we need to drop it now. We need to keep it budgeted because, you know, the staff is what the staff is. And hopefully Nate will have them filled. When you look at the extracurriculars there, we haven't paid the winter coaches yet. We wait until all the winter coaches are done with all their seasons, and then we pay them. They were paid in early April, so they didn't fall into here. So that number really is a little bit higher than that if you look at this at the end of April. So those are some of the things you have to look at. And I agree with Jeff, it'd be very difficult to go back and look at these numbers. I mean, we ba, we're basing our budget on the twenty-two, twenty-three actuals and the twenty-one, twenty-two actuals when we look at our budget. So we are a year behind when we look at that.
It's lagged, yeah.
Well, and so obviously, you know, and coming from the business I was in, salary is always your biggest thing. So that's why I'm saying we can't touch those. So we have to look at other avenues if you want to balance a budget. So for example, this current year, we've budgeted sixty thousand dollars for travel expenses, but we've only spent fifteen. So when we're looking at next year's budget, did we budget that for seventy next year? And maybe that's something we could cut if we know we've only used fifteen this year. That's all I'm saying. We have to find.
So again, it doesn't work that way. Again, what happens is the individual buildings and programs are saying, okay, I think we're gonna send two people to a conference this year, and so we're gonna budget some money for travel. Well, if the year goes through and they don't send them, they don't send them. That money drops to the bottom line. But when they're doing the budget, they're the ones telling us what they're anticipating their expenses to be, what their expectations are to be. It's not as, in my mind, it's not as simple as saying, well, last year we only spent five. I mean, we do that exact same exercise when we meet with them. We say, well, I see last year you only spent.
Explain that, absolutely. If there's, if it's explainable, that's all I'm asking is have we, have we looked in and say, why didn't?
We asked those exact same questions. We, we meet with all the buildings and programs in December, when the budget just start, we start with the budget. When they submit their budget to us, they give us their individual budget quickly. And we go through with each of those items on that budget and say to them, you know, we look at them, and I'm looking at them with a different eye than, say, the superintendent's looking at them. He's looking at them from a programmatic standpoint, does this meet the education needs of the kids? I'm looking at it from the standpoint, wow, this is kind of strange. Last year you spent five thousand dollars, this year you only have two thousand dollars budgeted. Are you stopping the program, is something different? Or vice versa? Hey, you only spent two thousand dollars last year, how come you're budgeting ten thousand dollars this year? That doesn't make any sense to me. So we have those same discussions. And, and that's early on in the budget process before it gets put into the format that you see and need yet. But I, I, to my knowledge, I don't know of any places that we have that, that we haven't scrutinized through the process.
Can I ask, Mr. Light, you're bringing up a point about the revenue and the expenditures to match. If I'm hearing you correctly, is that accurate? Like in other words, you want the revenues and the expenditures to be equal so that there's no deficit?
All I'm saying is when we're trying to build a budget for next year, and we need to get it in line, we're overspending. I, what I'm hearing is that we can't cut anything because they've already cut all the fat out. So we might as well just approve it the way it is. I don't know that I'm okay with that. So what I'm saying is I, I'm looking for everything that, from my eyes, now you guys have mastered the numbers. I get that you know almost everything in here, almost where every dollar's going. From my perspective and from a board that needs to approve, hopefully, a balanced budget, I'm trying to look at every avenue that I can cut out fifty thousand dollars.
True.
And so the most updated information we have is right now, this sheet looks like it's very up to date, that we budgeted for sixty thousand dollars on travel, we've only spent fifteen. So if there's something we can cut out of next year's budget, maybe that's it. That's all I'm saying.
Something, good.
I'm sorry, I think if I could maybe try to paraphrase. A large proportion of the budget, we actually have very little control over that. And salaries and benefits are a good example. Seventy percent of the budget is simply salaries and benefits. So the only place we have real discretionary control is in extracurriculars, travels, memberships, some of these other programs that we've been talking about. You know, the, the summer program, the community swim. Those are the real areas where we have choices to make. In many of the areas, you know, if diesel fuel goes to five dollars a gallon.
You're paying five dollars a gallon.
We're gonna pay a lot more for transportation, but we have little control over that, very little. So, you know, that's why I think the, the real choices for us, unfortunately, happen to be in many of those smaller dollar items. They're not, you know, we're, we're, we're probably not gonna sit here and say, let's, you know, we're gonna leave three phys, teacher positions on the field. But it's those smaller dollar discretionary programs that, that we actually have choices on.
And not only that, but in, when every single meeting, when there's discussion of waiving fees versus charging fees, those are the conversations that we have to continue to determine what's in the best interest because that allows for recouping of any negative.
I, I think when you look at budgets, I, I guess I have a, probably a little bit different approach of looking at budgets for as long as I've looked at them. We're pretty conservative in this district on how we handle stuff. My expectation is our revenues will come in higher than the number you see here. My expectation is our expenditures will come in lower than the number you see here. Will they come in at a higher and lower number to offset the difference? I don't know the answer to that question. But I can tell you that it is, it has, it has in the past been common practice, probably every year since I've been here, to have a deficit budget. Always have had a deficit budget. And yet, at the end of the year, we've had surpluses, potentially. Not always, sometimes we didn't, sometimes we actually went into the fun balance and spent some of the fun balance. But, you know, if you're looking at trying to have a budget that's balanced, just to say you have a balanced budget, that's just playing games with numbers. That's just an exercise with numbers. I can make the numbers say whatever you want them to say. I think you have in front of you the most realistic budget, to our knowledge, at this point in time. As Kirby said, and I agree with the statement, there's some stuff around the periphery, the fringes, that you can probably look at. If you're looking at total, if you wanted to have a budget that was totally balanced, you're looking at program cuts, you're not looking at small stuff. You're looking at big time stuff, which is not probably where you wanna go, especially if you end up the year and say, oh, well, we didn't need to cut that out for all since we had a surplus.
Well, so my first question was, coming into today, was gonna be that, and I should have started off with that. How many years have we gone in with a balanced budget? So if there's not even any effort to balance the budget, then I.
Well, I won't say there's not an effort to balance the budget. I recognize a balanced budget would be ideal.
Okay, I just didn't know that was the expectation. I mean, I, I was under the expectation that we were trying to hit a number. If we go in every year over, and that's the way we've done for years, and it balances out, I'm fine with that.
I've been here seventeen years, never had a balanced budget.
Okay.
I think it's like, almost like what we were just talking about with the recreation program is that, you know, you could have, you could have a farm subdivide and build six houses in the year that you never expected, and then all of a sudden you're getting all the tax revenue from six new houses that weren't, weren't anywhere on your periphery at the beginning of the year. Or just to pick a random number out, gasoline, I noticed, we budgeted three hundred and seven thousand dollars, and we've spent one eighty-seven. Well, we had two snowstorms this year. If we'd had six, I guarantee you that number would have been drastically different plowing all that snow. So there, there is play, but I think, sorry, I know, I don't like that word either. We're safe, there will not be any more this year. But no, I, I, you know, this is my third go-round of this, and, and I definitely think the first year I did exactly what, what all of you are doing, which is going line by line. I was, I remember saying, why are the computers so expensive? I can go buy a Chromebook for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Like, I'll just go buy them at Walmart tonight. And then Doug gave me a dirty look, and I learned it's because we do a lot of software programming. And, and that's my, that was my naivete, and I was quick to apologize for that. But I do, I do believe that other than like he's saying, cutting programming, this is the best we're gonna, this is the best we're gonna get right now. This is the closest we're gonna get right now. And it's good.
And the other thing to remember is just because it's in the budget doesn't mean he's gonna approve it for somebody to spend it. So they still get reviewed in the process. So like the travel expenses is a good example. I mean, that doesn't mean they're just gonna, at the end, we got fifteen grand, let's go to Vegas. You know, they're still gonna get scrutinized all the way.
That would be denied, pretty much.
Well, and I recognize that we have to do what we have to do, which is why in order to hit a, a budget, I was looking for, for where we could legitimately, like I said, there's a perfect example that we've learned we could cut a little bit. So can you cut a little bit off there just so that, you know, we're balancing? But again, I, I, I stayed up late at night trying to figure out where we could, because I thought we were, our goal was to hit that, but if we're not, I don't, whatever.
Well, it, it's not a bad goal to have, don't get me wrong. It's just not one that I don't think that we've been able to realistically deal with in the past. Again, to me, it's just, it's simply numbers, okay? A budget is a roadmap, it's a game plan. I will tell you that it's never a hundred percent accurate from start to finish. If we're within like one percent, I'm pretty happy. You know, one percent would be a pretty good outcome. If ninety-nine percent of everything we estimated comes out, that'd be pretty good.
And I absolutely recognize you guys put the work in to make this as accurate as possible. I just thought it was our job to get it more in line, eh, eh, whatever we had to do. But I'm, I'm willing to accept it, you know, if it's okay that way, and we'll see how the numbers come out, and I'm sure they'll be.
Well, like last year's a good example. Last year, we got an enormous amount of money from the state, which is why we're not having a tax increase this year because we had all that money come in, and we didn't expect it. And so that increased our fund balance significantly. We had a deficit budget last year. But at the end of the year, it wasn't a deficit because, well, it was a deficit last year, sorry, that's bad. Yeah, we did last year. But we, we got a lot more money in revenue than we anticipated, and so that came to the bottom line, so.
Yeah, our fund balance actually grew, even though we had expenditures higher. But that's because the revenues came in higher, so the actual amount coming out of the fund balance was less, so fund balance grew.
Were you gonna say one last thing, Kirby?
Well, I, I was. Mr. Gelsinger brought up kind of a question, and that is, and, and this is something I was talking with Jeff a little bit right before we started the meeting. And that is, once we approve a budget. does that mean that those estimated expenditures for programs that are called out in the budget, does that mean that they're kind of on autopilot? Or what I, what I asked Jeff, if he might be able to, to talk with us about is, and using maybe the athletic budget as an example, that's on page 39 of, of the first tab. To kind of talk about how that works, there are certain things that you really don't have any control over, it sort of happened. But there are the things that, uh, you know, staff does have control. Like as, what I'm talking about is, uh, page 39, a part of the athletic budget is $33,000 for uniforms. So how does that actually work in execution? The same with, say, $7,500 for awards, equipment, you know, reconditioning. So just because we, we have a lot of details that build up the overall total budget, and we approve that top-line number as well as all those details that have been used to estimate what that top-line number will be. But there is also a process for how that actually gets spent, how it's monitored against the budget, what happens when, say, annual expenditures are less than what was budgeted for, what happens when those expenditures happen to be greater than what was budgeted for?
So Doug and I will ta- tag team on this, I'll let Doug talk about the process and I'll talk about the budget philosophy. So with regards to like the buildings and programs, we encourage them all, and force, we essentially force them all to have a 5% budgetary reserve. We recognize that when we ask them to do the budgets, we're asking them to do a budget 18 months in advance of when they're going to be spending some of this money. And so there's no way their crystal ball could be any clearer than my crystal ball. And so by carving out of their allocation, this isn't extra, this is their allocation, they have to take 5% of that aside, put it away for a rainy day. What that is, is not necessarily for a rainy day, it's in case their estimates, what they are expecting their expenses to be, come in more than what they were anticipating. So they have some monies that they can use. Let's say a copier, we don't, we don't budget for small copiers, they cost, you know, 250 bucks, 300 bucks, whatever that number, it's a small number. Okay, if a copier goes crap, they have to buy that out of their budgetary reserve. We have a district-wide budgetary reserve, it's $150,000, okay? That's more like if, uh, we see we need a new position, you know, that's going to cost 50, $70,000, we have some monies to address that. If we needed, um, something that we didn't anticipate, we have some money to address that. So we do, and tha- and that's where some of those, if there are overages, that's where some of those overages would be addressed. As far as the process is concerned, I'll let Doug explain the process because we do have controls over all of this stuff.
Right, the process, purchase orders is how we, how we control the, the, the spending. So basically, every building has a purchase order system that they use, they come into me, I take a look at those, make sure it seems like it's in line with what their budget is, and then I approve them. So that's how we do that on a, on a purchase order basis. Every month, every principal and every administrator who has a budget, they get a report. They look at that report and they can say, okay, I'm over budget here, under budget there, whatever it might be. Um, perfect example, middle school, they'll come to me and say, I need calculators for the PSSA test. A lot of times what they'll do is they'll send a memo to Jay, say, I need to use $2,000 to buy some calculators for the PSSA test out of my budgetary reserve. Jay approves it, and I, then I go ahead and they make that, they make that purchase, and I keep track of that on my spreadsheet. Any budgetary reserve purchase has to go through Dr. Burkhart before it can be approved. That's just the way that is. You know, if, if the high school comes to me, or one of the buildings, just any of the buildings, comes to me and says, I, I need, my supplies are real close to being over budget, but they're under budget in another area, we take a look at that and we say, okay, are you going to use your travel expense? No, I, I, I budgeted for that to X number of teachers to go to this conference, they're not going to. Or, or it's an online conference now, so they don't have to go to it. Okay, you know, if you need, really need this item, you can use that travel expense that we haven't used yet, and you're not going to use to help pay for that item. So that's what we do with the budgets, that's how we, we take a look at them, that's how we monitor them. And again, every month, each administrator gets a budgetary report, they can take a look at that, see where they're at, see where they're stand, where they stand. And, um, you know, we come down to the year end, we take a look at that, and, you know, I know there's been times Dr. Burkhart said no to a budgetary reserve on it because it's the end of the year, you don't really need that, you know? So that money isn't there just to spend, it's there for an emergency, and this isn't an emergency, so, um, that's how we, that's how we monitor it.
And if we were talking about sports, I would assume we even boiled it down to the, the different sports. So it's not going to be $10,000 for soccer, $10,000 for volleyball, $10,000 for football. It's going to be how many students are playing in that sport, how many students are involved in that sport.
With the sports, what happens is Troy makes a budget for every sport. So he'll have a supply line item for wrestling, and boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and swimming, wherever it might be. Uh, uniforms, Kirby asked about the uniforms, he has a cycle he uses for the uniforms. So every so many years, we're going to get new basketball uniforms, every so many years, we're going to get new baseball uniforms. And he tries to keep that cycle on par from year to year. You see a little bit of a difference, obviously, we need to get new football uniforms, you're talking 60 to 70 kids on a football team. Football uniforms aren't, aren't cheap. You know, you talk about a basketball uniform, you need 15 of them, shorts and a, and a jersey. A lot less expensive than, than football uniforms. So Troy goes through that and they have that cycle set up, uh, for uniforms. And, and he has a budgetary reserve also that, that he'll use, again, he has to go to Dr. Burkhart to see if he can use that. Doug Greenholt, same thing, he has a budgetary reserve in his budget that he'll use, he saw that with, with the penetration testing. He's going to use his budgetary reserve for that.
Any other further points of clarification needed? Ready to move on?
All right, IME is the High School Project Financing Long Range Capital Plan Update. I don't have that update done yet, uh, that'll be permit, uh, presented to a future committee, the whole meeting, probably when you're talking about, um, um, buildings and grounds. Hopefully in the next month or two. It's something that needs to be in place prior to us going out to borrow our, for bonds for the remainder of the high school project. We still need to do about a $15 million bond issue. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, it's not going to impact this year's budget. We're going to wait as long as we can to have to go through that because obviously I'm hoping interest rates are going to come down eventually. But don't have anything for that for the night. The next item then is the 2425 General Budget Discussion, we've been having a general budget discussion. I tried to point out a couple of hit highlights and just hit a few of the highlights. Uh, and then we'll be happy to open it up to whatever other budget items you want to discuss or talk about. What we usually look at is the new initiatives, and you can see I have a list of the new initiatives for this year. Uh, some of them have been changed or added to, if you recall. We had amended the 10 PCAs for the autistic classes initially, so we did add that back in. We added in the sources of strength, that was that issue where, uh, it was a question of where it was being funded from. We decided that the program was a good program, we wanted to keep it, we just wanted to fund it from the district instead of from an outside source. Dean of Students position, you see there, the Learning Support Administrator position. These are salaries and all benefits included retirement, workers' comp, social security, uh, health insurance. The autistic support classes, that's one professional to support for that. And, um, the seven personal care assistants, we had originally budgeted 10. Uh, when we made the budget adjustments, we recognized the fact that we're not going to need all 10 come September. It's going to be throughout the year, you're going to add them on, and so that's why we took that number down. And now that we're talking about the budget, I'm sure, I should have said, we're going to go to this other packet that you have. And you can see there in the middle of the packet, um, the changes, uh, for the budget since we started the process. And what we do is, anytime we have a change to the revenues, you'll see that reflected at the top, anytime you see a change to the expenditures, that's a little bit further down. And so you can see, um, the changes that, so the new initiatives, most of them are already in the budget. The 611 for the 10 PCAs, that was not, um, the additional students at North County School of Technology, that's not really a new initiative because that's a program we've had in the past, we have 10 more kids this year. Source of Strength was added, that's that, one of those new initiatives. You can also see the reductions that were, uh, part of what was, um, presented to the board in February, I think it was. And there is a pa- page in your other packet, the last page in your other packet, sorry for all the different packets. It's the top of page, it's page nine, looks like this. And that was the sheet that we had distributed back in February to the board, uh, after we had the, one of the first budget discussions. There was a question of, well, you know, we really would like the district to look at some of the low-hanging fruit, which we did, we went back and made some adjustments and brought this back to the board. When we presented to the board, um, I didn't hear any negatives to those items. I say those items, those items above the dark line. So you'll see those include as, um, projected cuts at this point in time. There was a question at the last meeting about banishments, you see that's below the line, so that was not impacted, we did not make those adjustments at this point in time. Nor for the summer rec program, which we talked about tonight, we didn't know where that status was. And driver's ed was one of the other, other areas that was questioned, and you'll see that we actually are generating a positive, not a profit per se, but we're actually covering our costs with the behind-wheel portion of driver's ed.
And how much do we charge for that?
We are charging $275 per student. That includes six hours of instruction.
And their licensing costs, right?
I think, when I, I looked at it, that about half of, it was around 170 students.
I think it's probably about 175 students a year, that's about right.
Maybe half of every senior class is.
So is there anything in the new initiatives that you see listed there that you have concerns with, that we need to discuss further? Or is the board comfortable with those, that list of new initiatives? That'd be the first question I'd ask, yes.
I've just had a question.
Sure.
So with the, um, Learning Support Administrator position, which is an Act 93 position, we're still, that's not finished, so my only question is, does that number align with the, what we believe we'll go through?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question. I figured the answer was yes, but I think it's important that it's asked.
Yep.
Which position is that, is that, we don't have a learning support?
That's, um, that's the, um, position.
Specialized supervisor.
You have a different terminology?
It's, it's in, it's in there.
Okay.
It's like pre-goose spaghetti sauce.
Okay.
At the time of the budget, we didn't know what the title of that position was going to be, that's why it's Learning Support Administrator.
I was going to say, because that is not in the Act 93.
Yeah, so sometimes termination, uh, yeah, terminology, thank you, gets changed from start to finish because again, we're starting this process back in November timeframe, and we actually get to this point.
And the Dean of Students position is the collective bargaining position, so that.
Correct.
Doesn't need, that's irrelevant to the Act 93.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's not their salary, that's the all-in budgeted number.
Yep.
It is their actual salary plus all the other stuff.
Correct.
That's correct.
Hey Jeff, could you confirm that the 10 PCAs for the autistic classes, that's part of our initiative to bring some?
That's part of the five classrooms we're bringing back in-house from the IU. Yeah, we had, we had, we missed that, we missed that at all, the original budget, that was our oversight.
Yeah, we have five teachers in there that were already in there, so we just missed these, these individuals.
We had actually budgeted for 10 PCAs just as additional PCAs. And, um, I think the reason why it wasn't discovered till later is because we thought that that was the 10 for the autistic classes, and it was 10 different ones, and when it was brought to our attention, we said, oh, we better double-check that, so. That's what that is.
If you look on page 36 in your budget book, you'll see, like, the Dean of Students, the breakout of salary and all the different benefits. Same thing with the Learning Support Administrator, and so on and so forth down, down through there, you'll see the, the breakdown of what salary and the benefits are for those, those positions.
Any other questions with the new initiatives? All right, the next item to discuss or to consider is the list of potential budget cuts, that's this sheet here. So I guess the first question is, the five items that we have identified, are there any concerns with any of those items that we are, as an administration, coming to you saying, this is something we, uh, here that we can make as far as cuts are concerned?
We're talking about the top portion?
Correct.
So based on all of our conversations, the, these, running the numbers, they make sense. They are past history areas that have been considered. And if we are looking to move to Mr. Leiter's point, to be a little bit closer to alignment, then these make sense, if they make sense to you and have made sense in the past.
I think they make sense. The, um, I think the, the library donation one was one that the board had expressed, and, and so that's why you see that there. We have in the past had the library donation reduced, and there were years that that also was eliminated because of bad budget years. So, um, just for clarification purposes. But the other items, yes, you see the budgetary reserve, the tuition, regular ed, charter school tuition, all those, uh, basically, since it was a couple of months after we had done the budget, we went back and looked at some of those numbers and made some revisions, which is what Mr. Leiter was talking about a little bit earlier too.
I agree with those top five.
Concerns?
Yes. I, um, I do not agree with cutting the library donation, but I realize that I am very much in the minority, and I respect that, I respect all of your opinions. What I'm going to ask is if that is going to go through, would we be willing to consider a larger donation to the ambulance account? I think that the community service that the ambulance provides for us, I'm not saying $10,000, I'm not saying give it all to them, but $500 for them to potentially save the life of one of our kids at a football game. And I have seen that ambulance peel out of those football games with our students inside of it. I think it would be worthwhile to consider giving a little bit more to the ambulance, or however you want to categorize it, um, special services, the police officers are also at our games. And these men and women are protecting all the students in this district. So it's just a thought I'd like to put out there. I, I do understand that I will be in the minority against dropping the library donation, but we, we do serve our community members, and I, I think it's important that we remember that they're, they're potentially there to save the lives of our kids, so just wanted to put that out there.
Has that ever been higher? To your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. It's been consistent.
And how many, is it five or six home games?
Yes, five or six, yeah. It's, it's right around that area, so.
Right now, we're contributing about $100 for each game that they cover.
Pretty much.
Yes and no. Yes, for the high school football games, you are correct. I can't tell you how many times they come to our buildings, but it's a lot.
For non-sport related things?
Correct, like, we could have a medical emergency for a student, a staff member, parent, I mean, it runs the gamut. So they are, they are here for other reasons than just games. But again, that's, that's, you know, during the, yeah. So, but they are, and they are, they're always, I mean, they're excellent, all of our first responders in this area are excellent, but you all, you guys know that.
Well, not, not to diminish, but if, if we're loo- looking at them comparatively, the difference being they're waiting for something to happen at a game.
Correct.
Versus being called, which would potentially be covered.
Correct, that is correct, yes. But one is, one, one, I guess you could say would be above and beyond, and the other one would be during the course of their normal, I don't think normal's the right word, because I don't think they have a normal day, but during the course of the regular workday here at the school.
So.
Would it be possible, of course, do we have, uh, any kind of, you know, numbers of either actual visits or estimates? You know, is it kind of a, a once a week thing?
No, it's not once a week, I would say.
Isn't that in the, I think that's in Dr. Homs report.
Is it?
I think it's in the nurses' report.
It may be. I don't, I don't have it, but we can look to see if we can get it, yeah.
So we could understand?
Yeah.
Since they don't send us a bill, we don't have any tracking of, we don't have any business office, we don't get a bill.
It's not every week, I will say that, thankfully, thankfully it's not every week.
When they respond here, do people receive bills?
I don't know.
I mean.
I would imagine they do.
I mean, because when you're normally, if you're part of an ambulance club, that covers the expense because most insurances do not cover ambulance transportation.
Unless you're admitted.
So.
Yeah.
If, if they're coming here free of will, and that's 500 bucks, is sort of our ambulance service fee, that's definitely something to look into.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, same, yeah.
So my, my thought on it is that, when I did look at that, I thought that is awfully low for the service that it's provided. But I think we also, also have to understand that these people are getting paid to be here. EMTs have to drive around in that truck no matter what. And so it's nice that they're here, and I think that's probably the best place for them to be here. But it's not like it's a nonprofit, they're getting paid to be there already. Um, and if they're going to be anywhere in town, a gathering at a football game probably would be the best place for them. So I think that the donation is a thank you. I'd be fine with increasing it a little bit, but, uh, doing a large investigation and increasing it by any significant amount is, I think it's a little waste of our time because it's a money-making, I mean, they're getting paid by the hospital, they're, you know, they're, they're, they're charging astronauts. They're, you know, they're, they're, they're charging astronomical rates if they have to run somebody somewhere. This is not a nonprofit that we really could be donating a whole lot to.
Do we know what the donations go toward?
We simply send them a check.
Yeah. I think it's just a thank you gift, really.
I mean, most fire departments and will solicit donations. We get something from Lineboro out by us every single solitary year, asking for a donation to the Lineboro Fire Company.
I think it probably covers two if someone can't pay.
Yeah, if you're not part of the ambulance club, you're getting hefty bills if you're transported in an ambulance.
It's a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah. It can be up to close to a thousand bucks sometimes, depending as they send different units out.
I know a lot of that stuff has been changing lately too, cause a lot of, well, I would say from Seven Valleys to here, a lot of the ambulance depots, a lot of the ambulances at fire departments are being bought by Wellspan. So Wellspan is buying a lot of, like the actual depots and stuff. And I believe even Spring Grove Fire Department and a couple of other ones, Wellspan runs those ambulances now. So maybe some of that stuff is still changing down here. I have no idea. Cause I know Porters recently did the same thing too. So I think they have Wellspan ambulance now too, or two of them. So I don't know if they're doing that down here or if that's still like each township or, you know, cause Hanover Borough has a couple, Penn Township has a couple. So I, I don't know if that's changing down here too, but it's, it's working its way in because it's, the fire departments are not surviving very well on operating their equipment and ambulances. So I, I think maybe ask some questions to some, you know, maybe Penn Township Fire and say, hey, what's going on? Is the same thing happening there? Then we can determine, should we give them a thousand dollars, you know, instead of 500 or, you know? I think just a little, a couple more questions on that would help, you know, make a determination on that.
I would not be opposed to reconsidering the $500 if there's, you know, some uncompensated costs or something behind that. But if there's some numbers to support what, what we might change.
How can that be quantified?
I, I have no idea. I, I would suggest that it's really, it's really up to the board. You can do one of two things. It can be part of this determination of the budget right now or you can simply direct us at some point in time between now and whenever we send the contribution to pay them more than $500. In a $93 million budget, $500 isn't going to make a difference. So
So what time of year do you typically do that?
We usually do that. It's like October timeframe, near the end of the football season, we'll do that.
And for the purposes of slowing down the adoption of this budget, I don't, certainly don't want that research to in any way, shape or form and impede that. Especially if Jeff is saying we can just down the road be like, all right.
I definitely think it's worth bringing back up as a discussion point in the fall.
And we can do that. We can put it on an agenda item. Dr. Burkhart, got that. Thanks.
Honestly, you know, with all due respect, they do a lot. I think the board's considering. I think you just direct it now. I mean, $500, like Jeff's point, if it's a thousand dollars, those men and women, you know, they're giving up their time. I mean, because quite honestly, it's going to fall off our radar. I could write it on my notes, but October will come and go and 15 other things will happen tomorrow.
I was happy to do it on your radar, cause I know it'll fall off mine.
I don't think we were talking about cutting it.
No, no, I'm saying if you want to increase it, just increase it.
Yeah.
Well, we can make a deal. How about this? If, if we don't bring it to your attention by July, just remind us and we'll bring it up.
I'll write it in my notes.
Well
Do that.
I'm putting it on the board. If you don't see it by July, bring it to our attention. It means it's something we forgot.
Fair enough.
And that's just the ambulance, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it Hill or?
Penn Township.
Penn Township.
It's Hanover area fire rescue, isn't it?
Whatever it's called now.
We call it the Penn Township.
The Cloverland.
Yep.
Uh, anything else in the budget cuts? Does the board wish to make any additional changes to the proposed expenditures, which would be also considered budget cuts?
It's okay to say no.
It is okay to say no.
I support keeping the fan budget at 25,000.
That's correct. They haven't been touched.
Seeing none?
Uh, going to the next item then, at this point in time, and, and again, you know, you still have till final adoption. If something comes up that you want to have that discussion, but at this point in time. Going on to the next item, tax rate. It's currently budgeted at 2.4 mils. It's the current tax rate. We've already informed the board, we can't increase it even if you wanted to. The only thing we're doing is we're dedicating a tenth of a mil that was dedicated towards the general fund in the previous year over towards debt service, which is a continuation of the increasing millage dedicated debt service to help pay for our ongoing debt service payments. It doesn't impact the millage at all. Everybody okay with no tax increase?
I think the question is anyone not okay?
Anyone not okay?
That's the easiest question you're going to be asked today.
And then that gets us down to the budget timeline, the budget calendar. In order to have final adoption by June 12th, as you remember, we have to have it sit for 30 days. We can't do it any earlier than June 12th because April 24th, our May meeting is May 22nd. That doesn't include 30 days. So to have it adopted by June 12th, we have to have tentative adoption on either April 24th or May 8th. If the board has no strong opinions, I'd be happy to put it on the agenda for the 24th for tentative adoption. And what would be, what would be on the agenda would be what you're seeing here on the summary page.
I don't take issue or see any reason why we would move it further than April 24th at this point. Anyone opposed?
Yeah, uh, I don't know if we, so the question we're having is the 2028 is the actual budget form that the state requires us to use. And I don't know if it's the tentative adoption or the final adoption. One of those, I don't, it's definitely the final adoption. What we normally do is we'll do a packet like this. I know you've gotten a lot of paper. We like paper, sorry. I like paper. I should say me, not Doug. I like paper. So you'll get a packet like this that'll be for the tentative adoption of the budget. It'll have a, it'll just be a summary. It'll be a summary of the revenues, summary of expenses in the summary page you see here. So, you know, that is something that we always do every year when we distribute the budget for tentative adoption. So we'd be doing a packet like that. The 2028 is that they actually submit the budget onto the state. That comes later. One of the things from a budgetary standpoint, just an FYI, the state will tell us at some point in time, late April, beginning of May, how much money we're going to get for property tax relief monies. That's the gambling money that gets given back to the taxpayers. So when that number gets given to us, Doug does his math tricks and we reduce the, the assessed value of the properties in order to reduce their tax bill. And last year was like 190, I want to say a hundred and ninety dollars, 192, something like that. There's, there's a page in your budget book that has the history of all that as well. But that's the only thing that really gets adjusted and we have to, we have to sort of make that fit. Doug can explain it better than I can, but it's not as simple as just doing, we have to force it in sometimes. But, but that'll be a change that we would make between tentative and final adoption, cause we won't have that information till after tentative adoption.
Yeah, we do final adoption in June. You'll have the actual 2028 forms. I'll print all those out for you. Have all the information that we're going to submit to the state. So that's what you'll use to approve the final, final budget.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate all of the effort and patience.
No problem. Any other budget questions, discussion, yes?
Page 49. Level three long distance. I guess for, for a large organization with our limestone, we still pay for long distance.
We do. We don't get any read for that. We don't get any read for that anymore. Yep, we still pay for long distance.
That doesn't come with like a internet service or something?
We pay for, we pay for that too. We still pay for postage. Yeah, postage, yeah. Postage is going up, yeah. That's one, that's one of those areas that's like, okay, is a 4,2000 enough? Well, last year was X. We hope it's going to be enough. We'll, we'll see.
We'll work, we continue to work to go more digital.
I think that's true.
I do have something to add if that's okay. It's sort of budget related. I want to take Jeff's paper budget and use that. I would just like to get the board's thoughts. I know I'd sent you some information on those air purifiers and I was just curious. It answered your question because I, I bring it up because I believe in them. They're hanging in some of the most renowned medical facilities and I do think they have value and I just wanted to see what the thought was and if that could ever make its way to agenda for your consideration. So.
I support the air purifiers in the nurses' rooms. I spoke my piece about the wrestling room. I mean, I think it's going to smell no matter what we do. And I will also share, just on a personal note, because Kirby shared it, or I think it was Kirby, said he has them in his home. I now have them in my home. I bought them last week after the meeting and they work wonderfully. Not the $2,000 ones. I did not buy those. But, so I fully support putting air purifiers in the nurses' room. I think that it protects the kids. I think it protects the nurses. As, as anyone who's ever been to the emergency room knows, you walk in with a broken bone and if the guy next to you has pneumonia, you might walk out with pneumonia. So there are different reasons for going to our health suites, I think they're called here. And if we can do something to lower cross-contamination, I say, I don't, I don't see a harm to that. I don't. As far as the
I echo that too. I did some research and, yeah, they seem beneficial in multiple ways.
I, I appreciate Dr. Burkhart's work on this. I'm not, I'm not of the position that they wouldn't help in some way. I, I can't get past the, again, the cost on something that, it's a nice to have, it's a good to have. We have to make some hard choices and like we talked about earlier, we don't have much influence on probably 80%, maybe even 90% of the budget. And if we keep, if we keep programs alive and we add more programs and add more spending, and the federal government's been doing that for several generations and we're 35 trillion dollars in debt, we have to make hard choices.
The only thing I'm going to say is I, I wanted to call the local pediatrician to see if they have anything like that in place because I, I'd be curious, just trying to find a comparison. I appreciate all that the nurses do, but comparing it to like an ER or something like that, I can't see that comparison. Just again, like Kirby saying, looking at the cost, I myself have personally and professionally in the past looked into these sort of things. So I do understand and find value in them, especially because I know that a lot of children don't go to see the nurse specifically because of an ailment. Could be a headache or something of that nature. So totally get from your perspective, the value of it. I, I don't feel as though I've had enough opportunity to do adequate research.
Okay.
Um, I have, you know, cheap Amazon air purifiers in my house. I definitely recognize the, the benefit of them and I do think that there's like, uh, you know, a clean smell that you get. Uh, I was going to do a bunch of research on it and then it sounded last meeting like Matt and Kirby really had a good handle on what works. And so I figured I would just lean on their profession, their research forum, but maybe I'll do a little bit more research. I think we could probably get a different unit that's not $3,000. But, you know, I'm, I'm open to doing them. I just think we should make sure that we're spending the money on the right thing and not just, um, you know, make sure it's the right thing for, for the value.
Could I offer a clarification? Yes, I, you know, I think I had emailed everyone. There's a particular model that I bought. I like it. It works for me. The only thing I would say, and I think I captured this, the noise rating on the one I bought is 55 decibels and that's kind of like a noisy dishwasher. So it is, that one is kind of noisy. There was a different one that is very similar or the same as the one I bought that was advertised as 35 decibels. So that would be about one-fourth the sound. So I'm sure yours, the ones you were looking at probably don't
Yeah, I think, and I did look at the ones you had sent. I think at least one of them used ozone, correct?
Right. All of the ones that I had looked, the one that I bought as well, you can turn the ozone on or off. In fact, even it's a variable adjustment. Uh, and I think they advertise it as, you know, you can put this thing like in a restaurant when you go home at night, let it run all night. Kills germs, the ozone kills odors. Maybe that would be helpful in the wrestling room. May or may not be necessary. Again, though, you can, the ozone part, you can turn on or off.
Right.
You know, it's a variable speed fan. I think probably the ozone is, you know, what you might be concerned about, you know, whether you want to either use it or not. I guess there's different thoughts on, you know, the UV light. You know, do you, is it effective when air is passing by a UV light at a relatively high velocity? You know, or does it work better? Like the one I bought is clear and I think it's clearer so that when it's in the room, that that UV light is emitting, you know, in all directions. So yes, there are certainly some other kinds of options in the year. The one you found, Dr. Burkhart, you know, very well might be sort of the Mercedes of them.
Right.
Have you looked into any grants?
Um, no, because we, typically the grants are used when you're buying one for every classroom. And that, there are some districts, I know Big Spring up in Cumberland County, they have one in every classroom. I know that, like I said earlier, some of the schools in New York have them, schools in, in Texas. They're, and the, the, the person that we've been talking with, they're the exclusive provider. They did look into that Walmart. That shouldn't have been there. I don't know if somebody got in trouble for that, but nonetheless. But they are, they are the exclusive provider to schools and they're, they're expanding across the country. It is, I think fresh air is a big issue now. That came to light during, and every year we get, and I'm not talking about kind of flu and, you know, people with asthma, myself included, it just clears a lot of viruses and things out of the air. So I thought it was a good way to start, see how they work. And I know it is costly. It is. $2,500, $2,600 a machine. They are high quality. Like I said, they're hanging in some of the best medical institutions in the world. I get that, you know, we're not a medic, but the turnover rate in a, in a, in a health suite can be quite high. And so again, ultimately it's the board's decision. I find value in them, but I understand the cost. It would be coming out of this year's budget, but ultimately I defer to you. I just bring it, recommend it and then you decide.
Aren't we putting a whole new air system in the high school? Does that have
This is, well, this turns the room over in 38 minutes. You're talking about the filters. Filters can catch it, but this kills it.
So not anything else we're putting in our new system other than just regular filters? There's no other?
High efficiency. Yeah. There not, there's nothing similar to this.
Like filtration or anything like that in our new system?
Kirby asked that.
I asked Nate Osborne about that at the last meeting. You know, exactly what, with the high school renovation, what are we doing in order to try to, you know, improve the air quality? What he said is the system we're installing in the high school, and I, I think, I'm confident this is, that I translated correctly. Traditionally HVAC systems turn over the air in a room at about twice per hour. The system, what we're installing in the high school now, turns over the air about four to five times an hour. That's kind of the industry standard of today. The filters that are on the system are also industry standard filters. We didn't go and, we didn't spend like the extra money for HEPA filters or so the industry standard is much better today than it was, you know, five or 10 or 20 years ago. We are essentially using an industry standard system. His concern about UV lights was that the air passes through an HVAC system that are high velocity. And so there were some people that kind of questioned, you know, how, you know, the, the germs that might be in the air aren't exposed to the UV light long enough to kill the germs, you know, because it flows at a high velocity. Obviously those UV lights take energy. They have to be turned on and they do burn out. And so there's also a, you know, a maintenance And so there's also a, you know, a maintenance cost of periodically checking and replacing UV bulbs if necessary. So I think, and you know, Nate certainly should correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we're, we're getting a better system than what we had. We're getting an industry standard system. You know, we didn't incorporate, you know, some of the higher end features that maybe you would find in a, a medical facility or something like that.
Well, I guess that was my point. You know, everybody knows that central air is a lot more efficient than putting an air conditioner in every single window. So if we were really interested in making the air better at $3,000 a room, maybe we could just upgrade our system and then take care of the whole school.
Right. You have, but you have to remember too, and I, I don't disagree with that in the filtering, filters catch it. This kills it. There's a difference. That's, that's the major difference. This will kill the spores and the viruses that are in the air. A filter will catch it and eventually it could work its way through. It's, it's really, do, may that be enough? It certainly could be. We just look at, we're just looking at what I would call our medically sensitive or fragile areas where you have kids that are in there, nurses that are in there all day. But again, you know, I, I felt like it was responsible to bring it to you and let you make the decision and, you know, I think I have a read on where we're at.
And there's no maintenance costs for these either. That's.
No, you take the filter on, you wash them. Yeah.
So I'm on board with them. I mean, I don't know if I'm on board with buying that many units, but possibly test, testing them out a little bit and seeing if we have a return on investment. I mean, again, I don't know how you gauge it. Do we have less sick people next year? But.
That's what I was going to ask. Is there a reason why you're going with all seven? Because would it be worthwhile to look at like Park Hills or one of the older schools? If, if, just for sake of argument.
I would, I could say that maybe go with each nurse's office. I would hate to put it in one nurse's office and not any others just because out of equity, excuse me, but you know, if we get, we avoid the wrestling room or one of those other areas and see how it goes in the nurse's office, that's certainly something we can do. It's just the reason we're recommending all the nurse's offices just because of, I'm recommending, I shouldn't say we. I'm recommending all the nurse's offices because that way every nurse's office would be equal at that point.
Yeah, I, I would support the nurse's offices for sure for the air.
And yeah, the point of clarification, um, not that, to, to Jeff's point, we don't, uh, my former business manager would call it flushing the budget. We are not flushing the budget with this purchase. This was something we talked about for about the past year and the buildings and grounds budget does have the dollars in it for us to put them in the nurse's office this year with no additional expenditure and not put that, does it, budget in jeopardy of going over. I say that and then we'll have a roof collapse not coming. Hopefully it doesn't happen, but like you, you understand what I mean? Barring an unforeseen emergency. I know, you said snow. So, uh, so that's, that's the other reason. I had that conversation with Jeff too, so. Yeah, I see you put that out there now too, so.
If you look at nurse's office numbers, um, probably in our two bigger elementaries, they average 50 to 75 kids a day in, in the nurse's office. Sometimes it's like 120 or something crazy.
In the high.
Depending on what's going on, but I imagine the middle school and high school is crazy like that too. Cause we have higher population obviously in, in the middle or in the high school. But, um, yeah, I don't know. My mind kept going to grants too, like there could be some local ones too, that healthy community grant from UPMC or something like, we, we could look into stuff like that too, but.
So I think what you just said was a point of clarification for me because I thought you had stated that it was unbudgeted, but it's just unaccounted for, but there is a place for it.
That's correct. It was, it is unbudgeted, but because we've been talking about it, but when I talked with Jeff about putting them in the nurse's office, he said that they would come out of buildings and grounds and that's where they should come from. And based on probably more or less, not, not a whole lot of snow this year and some, some additional opportunities, he, Jeff and I had the conversation and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, if we reduce it to six, it's going down from just under 19,000 to probably just a quick math, what, 2,500, six, 12, 15? So we have a $15,000 expenditure and that would put one in each of the nurse's offices. And it's installed. You put two screws in the wall. You hang it about six to eight feet off the floor, buy an outlet in a circular, central location. So it pulls the air in and you change the filter every 30 days and it has a seven year warranty.
Based on that information, I wouldn't be opposed to it being on a future agenda as long as I have more opportunity, like I said, to do additional research.
Yeah, it seems beneficial and if there's a place for it in that budget, we can still look for local grants and put that back in the budget if we come up with something.
Or if we find they're effective too, we can continue to put them in other rooms. We could look at some of the other.
I think it's a win-win.
Were you going to say something additional?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I think the one room you could see a difference would be the wrestling room. Like that would possibly be the one that you would actually see a difference immediately. So, I mean, if Nate's willing to give up his budget for it, I mean, if he has the money to give it up.
Why ask Jeff, not Nate?
Nate's not here to defend, Nate's not here to defend himself.
All right. Anything else under item eight? Speak now or moving on? Item nine, any other business?
Yes. At our last, uh, planning meeting, we approved a, um, AP Gov to use the library on a Sunday for a, uh, an exam, a practice exam. It said that that was on April 25th. It was pointed out to me by a, a listener, a member of our district that April 25th on Sunday doesn't exist. It is April 28th. So point of clarification, uh, I don't think we have to go through the approval process again. We've already approved it. But AP Gov will be using the library on April 28th for a test AP exam.
Yes, thank you. That is correct and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
I have one thing just to bring up to make a mental note for in the future. There, there was a conversation with a few other board members from other districts and I, I came to find out that Southern actually was doing a program for, um, first responders for a, a, a certain small amount for like a tax rebate. Because, um, in talking to President Commissioner Wheeler, she said the county is having a lot of issues retaining volunteers for volunteer fire departments and other things like that. So I think that was a joint venture in ideas with her and Southern to, to come up with that, uh, tax rebate. And it really struck me as a, a great idea that first responders die every day, you know, for all of us. So it, it, it's something I think we should look into for the future to try to, you know, that's an incentive to, to keep more and produce more first responders, you know, more selfless people that will put their lives on the line like that and make sure that if somebody's house is on fire, that they can put it out, you know, or save people in car accidents, which happen all the time. So I, I think it's something we should put in our minds to, to look into because I think it would be beneficial as a win-win everywhere. So. I just wanted to bring that up. I, yeah, Justin, I think you were part of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I agree. And I think to, um, Mandy's point about maybe kicking them some extra money, this might be a, a separate alternative to that instead of donating. I wanted to ask Mr. Momma, are you aware of how that program works?
So I am aware of the program. It is actually in legislation that was approved by the state. So it's a state program. I don't know how many districts actually do it yet. I know we haven't looked at it that closely yet, uh, so I don't know how it actually operates, but we can certainly, uh, look at that and bring that back to the board for consideration.
Yeah, Ms. Wheeler said it was actually, uh, in every area that they've started it, it encouraged, um, more people to, to donate their time to become to the, to the fire department, which obviously balances out. The more people are there, the less people they're overworking.
The question comes, and I have to talk to Southern how that works or talk to other school districts who have implemented. I, I don't know the, uh, actual mechanics of the system. How does it work? Is it actually a reduction in their assessed value? I mean, the only tax we have is real estate tax. We don't have.
It's a refund. So they're getting their assessed value, they're paying off that and then it's, it comes back as a refund. They have to file with, with us.
So if you're a first responder but didn't pay your taxes, you don't get a refund?
Correct. If you don't pay your taxes, you're probably not getting a refund. I don't know much about the program. I just, I know that it was, it was clarified that it's not a discount, it's a refund.
Okay. I, I think if you ask them, they might.
Well, it's, it's in legislation. I, I've seen it. I, I glanced over it's on a pile of things I have to look at at some point in time in the future, which I haven't looked at yet, but I'll dust it off and look at it.
Yeah.
Excellent. Please. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing as there are no visitors, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
All right. Thank you. 8:30.